I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council Study Session held on Tuesday, November 28, 2023, commencing at 7:01 PM. Tonight, council members in attendance are Carson Anderson, Stuart Kritzer, and myself, Forsythe. There are three items on our agenda tonight: Economic Development Strategic Plan Data Analysis Findings and Strategic Plan Themes, Redmond 2050 Phase Two Policies, and Council Talk Time. The first item on the agenda is the Economic Development Strategic Plan Data Analysis Findings and Strategic Themes. Sarah Fee Allen, Deputy Director of Planning and Community Development, will introduce the item.
Thank you, and good evening, council members and mayor. As Council President Forsythe said, the title for tonight's session is Economic Development Strategic Plan Data Analysis Findings and Strategic Themes. Council has already approved the consultant contract with Community Attributes, Inc. on July 18, and we are excited to be joined by our consultant tonight, who has been very busy as a first touch with City Council to discuss key findings and the preliminary direction of the strategic themes that we'll be taking. I will now turn it over to Phyllie Marsh, our Economic Development Manager, who will kick off the presentation.
Thank you, Deputy Director Allen. Well, we're thrilled to be here tonight with our consultant, Madalina Kalin from Community Attributes, Inc. Community Attributes is a premier economic development consulting firm with over 20 years of experience in strategic data storytelling and action plan development. The agenda for tonight's study session includes an introduction of the Economic Development Strategic Plan process, key data findings from the landscape analysis, as well as a quantitative data research, identified preliminary strategic themes, and current and future stakeholder engagement to inform the plan development. After the presentation, we ask for discussion and feedback from council on the preliminary strategic themes, and if there are any topics of interest that you would want to make sure we analyze and evaluate for strategy and action development. I want to take a quick moment to pause on why we are doing this strategic plan. I have been fortunate to have been with the city for just over a year now, and that time has confirmed that Redmond is poised for economic opportunity across different facets. The Economic Vitality Chapter of the Redmond 2050 Comp Plan that you reviewed in September set some great policy guidance. This effort will help expand on a vision and framing around economic development and business assistance, including the specific strategies and actions needed to realize our collective vision and solidify the foundation for the City of Redmond's Economic Development Work Program. Through a variety of efforts, there have already been great conversations with the community and other stakeholders on economic development and business assistance. We are synthesizing all of those conversations in aggregate through this plan and then diving deeper to align and understand specific opportunities. Many programs and partners are part of our economic development strength of the city, and this plan will help guide us all in a synchronized direction over the next five years. To translate some of that into goals, it's important that we, and we have been intentional, that this process does not happen in a silo. It needs to align and interplay with both existing Redmond as well as regional strategies and programs. We want to make sure that we balance the quantitative data, which is numbers, facts, and figures, with qualitative data, the trends of what people are saying. Through previous studies and efforts, including the Redmond 2050 Outreach, we have some great foundational qualitative data. We're now layering in some detailed quantitative data and validating it again through a qualitative engagement loop that includes a questionnaire available in six languages, focus groups, and interviews. We are right on the coattails of the Redmond 2050 Economic Vitality work, and this plan should be viewed as advancing those policies that you reviewed in September. By working with partners both internally as well as externally in the local and regional sphere, we can leverage and accelerate the program implementation that comes out of this plan. And lastly, while this plan needs to remain attainable, we know many visionary economic development practices take decades to realize, so we also want to plant the seeds of aspirational strategies for future implementation consideration. Quickly, this slide illustrates where we are in this process marked by the red bar. We are continuing stakeholder engagement that includes the focus groups, interviews, and a questionnaire to help shape our strategic direction and actions, and we anticipate being back to council in late Q1 with some draft strategies for review. I'm now going to turn this presentation over to Madalina Kalin, Senior Economist at Community Attributes, Inc., to discuss the landscape analysis findings, quantitative data findings, and preliminary strategic themes for the plan development.
Thank you, Phyllie, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. I'm Madalina Kalin. I'm a senior economist with Community Attributes. I've been project manager for this work. We're very excited to support Redmond and happy to be here tonight. As Phyllie mentioned, we started out this work with our, what we call our Landscape Assessment and Data Analysis. So we began by asking, where is Redmond today, and how did it get here? To answer this question, we first conducted a landscape assessment. We looked at all the existing plans, research, and studies, and all the great work that's been done so far, including the economic vitality element of the Comprehensive Plan Update, and we synthesized all of these documents, summarizing findings around key strategic themes and things that would be relevant for the development of the plan. In Part Two, also as Phyllie mentioned, we layered in some quantitative analysis. We looked at data around socioeconomic and demographic characteristics of the city. And as part of this analysis to help contextualize conditions in Redmond, we compared the city to the Puget Sound region, which was defined as King, Pierce, and Snohomish, as well as five other benchmark communities that have similar demographic and economic profiles. And the benchmark cities were Bellevue and Bothell and Washington, neighbor and peer cities, Mountview in California, Hillsborough in Oregon, and Raleigh in North Carolina. Lastly, in Part Three, we'll synthesize all we have learned thus far from the landscape assessment and the data analysis, as well as the stakeholder engagement, the focus groups, the survey, and the interviews that we're conducting, as well as meeting with the core working group, city staff, and Phyllie, and bring this all together into strengths, weaknesses, and external opportunities and threats analysis. And this SWOT analysis will help us transition towards the strategies and actions part of the plan, which will happen in beginning, starting and beginning of next year. Next slide, please. Diving into some of the findings from our data analysis, so these are preliminary findings. We're still in kind of the messy part of the data analysis, but I think we've got some good preliminary findings that we can show you tonight. Over the past decade, Redmond has created more than 21,000 jobs. So this slide is showing employment growth by industry. Redmond employment has grown at a faster pace than the Puget Sound region, 1.7% for the Puget Sound region. Redmond was 2% per year on average. And it's also grown faster than two of the benchmark cities, Bellevue and Raleigh, and at the same pace as Bothell. Mountview and Hillsborough, which are two of the other benchmark cities, experienced faster employment growth at about 3.8% and 2.4%, respectively. The chart that you see on this slide shows the change in employment by industry between 2012 and 2022 in Redmond. The employment trends analysis is utilizing industry clusters that were identified in collaboration with the city, with One Redmond, and from our own analysis of the employment data. We've used definitions for these industry clusters that exist in studies that were done by PSRC, the Puget Sound Regional Council, the Department of Commerce, Life Sciences, Washington, just to be consistent with already existing definitions for these clusters. So this chart is showing that employment in the past decade has been led by the information, technology, and interactive media sector. So of the 21,000 jobs, 76% of that growth was in the ICT and interactive media sector. Over the same period of time, the manufacturing sector lost over 1,000 jobs. This is the sector with the biggest loss. There were some additional sectors that have lost a few jobs, like government, wholesale, transportation, and utilities, and retail. We've also looked at industry concentration in Redmond. So this slide is showing location quotients for 2022 on the vertical line, and the compound annual growth rate, which is the average growth rate per year on the horizontal axis. And that measures the growth of the industry over time. Location quotients refer to the proportion of jobs within specific industries in Redmond compared to the proportion of them in the U.S. as a whole. A location quotient that's greater than one, so that would be, in this case, life sciences and ICT and interactive media, demonstrating, is demonstrating that Redmond has a larger share of jobs in an industry compared to the nation, and indicates that these industries drive the city's economy. A high location quotient in a particular industry presents opportunities for additional growth of that industry or related industries because of competitive advantages, such as existing skilled labor pools, suppliers, facilities, transportation hubs, so the things that are supporting the growth of that particular industry. So ICT and interactive media is standing out in this chart as by far the most concentrated industry in Redmond. It's 11 times more concentrated than the U.S. average. Life sciences is the only other industry with a location quotient higher than one. I will also point out that there's quite a few industries that are, have seen growth in the past decade, and clean energy and education are showing the highest levels of growth if we're looking on the horizontal axis. We've also looked at real estate market conditions, so looking at the industrial office and retail inventory, as well as vacancy rates, and compared Redmond to the benchmark cities that I've spoken to. So for industrial inventory, from 2007 to 2023, Redmond's industrial inventory declined by 2%. Bellevue and Bothell, regional peers, lost more than 30% in this same period, while Mountview lost 19%. Hillsborough, Oregon, added 45% more industrial space. Redmond's industrial vacancy rate was at an all-time low of 0.1% in 2022, but has since risen to 2.9%. That's the latest for 2023. However, that's still a too-low rate for the health of the market that may be impeding locations or expansions for certain industrial businesses in Redmond. For office space, Redmond, in Q4 of 2023, the total inventory of office space in Redmond was 17 million square feet, and it was second only to Bellevue and Raleigh, North Carolina, both larger cities amongst the benchmark cities. We've also looked at growth. Growth in Redmond was 22% during this period, and it was less than most other peers. And since the pandemic, Redmond and all the other cities that we've looked at, similar to the region, and work-from-home trends have impacted this. As we all know, Redmond has seen a increase in office vacancy rates, so they more than doubled from 1.9% in 2019 to 5% today. For the retail inventory during the same period in the past five years, the retail inventory declined in Redmond by nearly 6%, while other benchmark cities have experienced increases during this time. Retail vacancy rates have also trended downward since they peaked around 2011 to an all-time low in Redmond of 0.9% as of Q4 of 2023. We consider that a healthy vacancy rate is generally around 3% for retail. So in terms of all the work that we've done and the data that we've looked at so far, we are trying, as Phyllie mentioned, to validate and to emphasize what are going to be the strategic themes that we want to focus on for the development of the plan. So the city has done some prior work to identify some initial strategic themes that we've worked on validating with data, and will continue to work on doing that with stakeholder engagement. But we wanted to talk through some of these with you tonight at a high level in terms of what they, what we are understanding through some of these, and then what are, what is the why behind why this should be the focus of the plan? So the first one on this list is equitable small business and entrepreneurship support. This refers to providing small businesses in Redmond with the right tools to start, stay, grow, and flourish. So in terms of why this is important, small businesses represent a significant share of the City of Redmond's economy, and they play a vital role. Roughly 93% of Redmond's businesses have less than 50 employees, and these firms employ over 18% of all workers in the City of Redmond. So small businesses bring a vibrant and vital energy to Redmond's local economy. They support quality of life for residents and for workers. They can help create the sense of place that attracts visitors, talented workforce, and more businesses and investors who will drive further growth to the city. Several recent studies have been conducted that we've been looking at that have identified challenges and gaps and needs for small businesses, and we'll be summarizing all of those in the plan, and looking for ways to address through actions under the strategic theme. And some of those were like limited access to capital, cultural and linguistic barriers, marketing of, inadequate marketing of existing resources and services, and others. Business retention and expansion refers to continuing to build relationships and engaging with existing businesses in Redmond to accurately assess their needs, address displacement risk, and other business challenges, and support expansion of business operations in Redmond. Why this is important, first of all, in our economic development approach, we always say that cities should work with what they have, so really emphasize the importance of existing assets, which are the businesses that exist in a city that have already invested money and that support and drive the city's economy. Research also shows that a greater percentage of new investment and job creation comes from existing businesses, anywhere from 40% to 80%. Retaining and expanding existing businesses is vital to the continuing social and economic health of Redmond. The City of Redmond has also identified that existing businesses throughout the city are facing the risk of displacement due to growth, property sales, redevelopment. Some Redmond businesses are also challenged by increasing commercial rents. So there's existing challenges, and we'll continue to work in, on emphasizing and uncovering some of these, and the business retention and expansion theme will have actions that address these challenges. Business attraction and recruitment and cluster diversification and expansion, these two kind of go hand in hand. Business attraction and recruitment, sorry, cluster diversification is about what are opportunities for diversification and growth in Redmond, while the business attraction and recruitment refers to how to capitalize on those opportunities. So expanding established and growing clusters to further entrench competitive advantages while diversifying Redmond's economy and creating economic resilience, promoting the attractiveness of doing business in Redmond and improving business climate. So why is this important? We've just shown that ICT and digital media is responsible for more than half of all Redmond employment, and Microsoft alone accounts for over 47,000 jobs. And that leaves workers vulnerable to industry consolidation, relocation, contraction. Also, participants in outreach for the Redmond Comprehensive Plan Update suggested that continuing reliance on the tech industry could result in economic and cultural homogeneity, a loss of small businesses, housing affordability challenges. So diversification of economic activity is important, given the reliance of Redmond's economy on the tech sector. Workforce training, workforce training refers to working with partners to attract, retain, and develop a broad base of creative and diverse talent in Redmond. There's been recent studies that have been conducted by the Western Washington University that have identified workforce challenges in Redmond, including occupation gaps, in computer and mathematical-related occupations, management occupations, fewer qualified workers with relevant degrees than their job positions across most industries, skill gaps, a high cost of living and housing costs. So those are some of the challenges that have already been surfaced for workforce training. And within the outreach for the Redmond Economic Vitality Element, community members described a desire to align workforce development efforts with needs of underserved communities, and policies that lead to income self-sufficiency for both workers and business owners in Redmond at a range of skill and educational levels. Lastly, district development and placemaking refers to leveraging place assets to drive inclusive and equitable growth citywide. So as part of the Comprehensive Plan Update, Redmond's been already doing a lot of work on centers and neighborhoods and planning for growth within the two designated regional growth centers, Downtown Redmond and Overlake. They're forecasted to accommodate 64% of Redmond's job growth through 2050, and Marymore Village is transitioning to a countywide growth center. So careful planning will be especially crucial to the economic success and sustainability of these areas. It is also increasingly vital for cities to differentiate themselves in terms of the quality of life and amenities from other places to compete for talent in the region as Redmond is competing with the entire region, for tech talent, for life sciences talent, manufacturing, and all the other industries that are growing in Redmond. I think that's the end of my slides there, and I'll turn it over to Phyllie. Thank you.
Thank you, Madalina. So as you saw, lots of opportunity. So tonight, we want to hear your feedback on the data presented, and if we're headed in the right direction on these strategic themes as we continue to dissect and really pull out what those specific strategies and actions are to implement, as well as any insights you have to share. And then later this week, we'll be meeting with our cross-departmental working group to share this data, discuss these strategic themes, as well as any comments we hear from you tonight, to lay in their insights. And then by the end of the year, we hope to have a finalized landscape and data analysis that will set the foundation for strategy and action development. So in addition to a questionnaire that's available in six languages, we're holding six industry-specific focus groups. And then a few other projects I want to note that we'll be intersecting findings with, that you're aware of, include the Tourism Development Strategic Plan. So that's going to be diving deeper into the tourism industry, but we want to make sure that this plan and that plan talk to each other. There's also the Overlake Intercultural Small Business Assistance Hub concept. That's what we received the National League of Cities grant for, so that effort is going on right now. We're also the recipient of a HUD Thriving Community Technical Assistance that's looking at some of the displacement challenges in our region, so we'll be taking those findings and recommendations and weaving that into this effort. So we will be coming back to council in Q1 with those strategies and actions to get more feedback, and we anticipate adoption of this strategic plan by Q2 of 2024. So with that, we now open it up to you for your feedback, questions, comments on what you heard here tonight.
Thank you so much. Any opening questions from council members who wants to kick us off? There we go. Council Vice President Kritzer.
I'll get it started with just a few questions. I probably might come back around. Two quick logistical questions on this. One is really interested about the SWOT analysis. Is that going to be included in the materials that'll be provided in the end for us to be able to look at as well? Great, I'm seeing nods. And is this strategic plan that we're working on, is it going to give us the strategies and, as well as some of the implementation roadmap, or is it going to be followed by an implementation plan?
This will be a combination, so they'll have the strategies as well as some of those specific actions. It is a five-year plan, so those actions, we do want to stay somewhat flexible and nimble in order to respond to changing landscapes and scenarios, but really, the intention is to give us our work program roadmap to start running at full speed.
That's great. I would say, you know, one thing that I think, I didn't exactly see it addressed here, but I think is more part of the implementation that I think will be interesting, is how much of the actual working on the strategies will be on us as a city, and how much we'll do via One Redmond. That's going to be something that I'm going to be interested in, is kind of how we balance that. And then just to respond to a couple of the different things, I think overall, this is just really great in terms of what the themes that you're diving into. I think for me, some of the big questions that come up as we look into this plan is really, you know, what's the right balance of industries that we want to have? Clearly, we have a large amount of the tech industry here, and, you know, and also, what's the right balance of different company sizes to make sure that we're resilient over time to that issue that you said residents also raised? And I think in particular, as you mentioned, I think one thing that's on my mind is just this cool opportunity that we have as we're planning for the future and thinking about really reimagining some big parts of our cities in terms of bringing in businesses, creating some new corridors in Overlake, in Marymore, in, and even, you know, around the light rail in the Redmond Town Center area, is to, I hope that this plan can help us to answer some of the questions around, you know, really, what are the different types, especially amongst the small businesses and the ones that create the quality of life and the feel of neighborhoods, that we can kind of think about. What are the things, especially looking at other case studies from other places, other cities? What are the ones that move the needle the most in terms of people's feeling of a good quality of life, where we might focus our efforts on attracting those types of businesses in the long run? And then I guess the other piece that I really appreciate that's in here, more just giving you feedback that I think all on the right track, is around displacement mitigation strategies. I'd be very interested to know, I'd be very interested to know, you know, are there any places that have dealt with similar pressures that we're dealing with that have had success in avoiding displacement? Because I, I think I've said this before, I, I feel like our businesses from talking with them are in a tough place in that they're just emerging from the pandemic, which was really challenging for them, and now facing a huge amount of growth and change with the light rail coming in and commercial rents going up. And that makes it doubly hard for a lot of our smaller businesses to be able to thrive. So being able to understand from places that have gone through, especially a light rail coming in or some sort of significant thing that creates an economic change in terms of land values. I know that I have discussed in the past, sometimes with One Redmond, about the idea of, like, would there be a possibility of land banking or what kinds of things we could do to truly look at that kind of issue? But just interested to see what you come up with. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Stewart?
Great. Thank you so much for this wonderful presentation about where you've been so far. I think the, the comp cities that are used in this analysis kind of highlight what we already know around Redmond is like, it's one of the best-kept secrets. It's a great place to live. The other cities around the country that were listed are cities that pretty much everyone in the country knows of those cities, but they might not know of Redmond. So I just thought that that was an interesting acknowledgement. My primary piece of feedback is that we know you're on the right track because of what you shared at the very beginning. You're not creating this in a silo, but rather having already studied all of the plans that have been underway for the last several years, which means all of that work and all of that community feedback is being reinvested in here. So I'm very confident that you're getting the right themes out of that and seeing that overlap. So I'm really excited about that, and I feel like, we should all feel like we're just getting such a great return on that. And hopefully that you're not starting from a starting line, but, you know, at a significant advantage. I would just say that I'm more curious than anything, each of these theme areas, in each of them, we could hear the polarity, the biggest one being, we have this huge asset in our community that we have this thriving, specific sector, and also we could be stronger with a more diverse economy, right? This polarity is like, what are we, what do we, how do we want to continue to manage that in the future? And unlike some of the other plans that we've been discussing and studying for the last couple of years, a five-year plan horizon is actually quite small. So I think that that helps us narrow our focus quite a bit and not put too much pressure. We don't have to achieve all of the themes around economic development in 2050 in only the first five years. So for me, I think that helps us, like, take a little bit of pressure off. What is solvable in that five-year window? And at the end of that five-year window, what is it that we want to be set up for in the, in the future, you know, in the next five years? So just how those polarities are going to be wrestled with is something I'm going to be most curious to see when, when you come back. But really appreciate your update on this, and thank you. I definitely think you're headed in the right direction.
Thank you. Councilmember Carson?
Thank you. So I, I was looking at the, the market conditions slide, and one of the things that I'm concerned about, and I think others in probably every economy are worried about, is the current office space situation. And I think it's a little bit of an understatement to say occupancy rates have increased since the pandemic because, I mean, we see projects being stopped mid-design because there's too much office space. So I'm curious if we've kind of undersold that in terms of, do we have data that says we're in trouble or Redmond's market is in trouble in that regard? Because this council can't do anything if there isn't data that says there's a problem. So I'm just curious, I don't think we're in as bad a place as other, but that doesn't mean that there isn't something potentially to, for the council to do to make that space more flexible for owners, because nobody wants to see even a small owner go under because they just can't lease the property, nobody wants it. It doesn't matter really at, at what, at any price, they're just not, they're no takers. So I don't know that we have that problem, although I do know of some spaces that have been empty for quite a while. And so I think that concerns me that, you know, because we, we have the power here to do something about uses, about flexibility and, and those kinds of things. So I think for me, that's what I would want to know. And if we do have a problem, you know, what are some of the strategies that are being used to combat that?
I can start, and then Madalina can probably follow up. But I will say, we are, we do have a recent example that we're watching closely. So prior to, six months ago, Redmond actually had very low occupancy, office occupant, vacant, office vacancy rate on paper. And that did provide a challenge in terms of business attraction for office users because we didn't have large floor plates or buildings available. The Millennial Office Park, which is up in southeast Redmond, that was leased to Microsoft, is currently on the market. So that's about 560,000 square feet. So we are watching that and seeing if there is interest, who's that interest from, and kind of where, where that interest lies, because it's the first time in a while that Redmond's had that vacancy opportunity.
You said Millennium?
Yeah.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah.
That's one I noted, and one of the big ones I noticed. But there are a few smaller ones around, too, that have been empty for a while, and that kind of concerns me, so.
Yep, we're definitely watching that and then seeing again that the, the importance of that diversification across industry types to help balance that.
I will also add that one thing that we didn't mention on that slide was that when we compare the vacancy rate, the existing vacancy rate for Redmond for office space to the benchmark cities, it's the lowest vacancy rate. And it's like significantly lower than cities like Bellevue, which I think it was around, just looking at the data I have here, around 12%. Redmond was just under 4. So just to provide a little bit of context, if that helps.
Because it didn't have any numbers, and I was just like, okay, I don't know, yeah, I know it's getting, it's not as good as it once was in terms of being, you know, close to 100% occupancy, but how far away from 100% are we? So that helps. And I know that there were some very big players in Bellevue's market that have decided to consolidate, one being Microsoft not re-upping on a couple of their leases, so. And, and we've had interest from the likes of Amazon and obviously to the detriment of Seattle, so. But, I mean, that's, that's how markets work, if it's an attractive area. But, so that, that's helpful that it's only 4%, because I think if it was, you know, one of the higher ones in, in our peers, I would be concerned. Sounds like it's maybe not the concern I thought it was. It, it's always concerning just to see you unlease space, but sometimes you want to have that ability to churn, because, you know, new players can't come into the market if you don't have any, any space, so. Great, thank you.
Thank you. I will jump in with my questions and comments. So the statistic, I think you heard you say, was 93% of the businesses are essentially small businesses that are in Redmond. That was really interesting to hear, and I think from the conversation we've been having, it'll be, everyone's going to be really excited to dig into that data that you're going to provide. So that one was really fascinating to me. I was really excited to hear you also talk about the displacement opportunities, since that's something I've been talking about a lot. And I didn't see it in the presentation, so I had a note to mention it, but I'm really looking forward to seeing what creative solutions you come up with, because that's one of the biggest things that I hear about from our small businesses, is we're, we're having to move because this building is getting redeveloped and we have nowhere to go. So really interested in those creative solutions for that. I was interested to know if the vacancy rate that you have for retail on the, in the presentation, does that account for the retail spaces that have converted to office spaces, like the Macy's Building, the REI Building, and how that, how is that taken into account?
I couldn't say that for sure, but I think when we pull the data, it's, it should be everything that is considered retail within the city. But I, I wouldn't be able to, to answer that, but we can look into that and, and make sure that, make a note if it's captured or not.
That would be interesting to know, since those were two really big retail spaces that we lost. I know it got converted into other use, but it does definitely shift the experience of living in Redmond, and I know people are still feeling that loss. So interested to see if that's one area we might need to have more retail space to bring, bring some of that back. And then also interested on the, the conversation around the 4% office vacancy that led me to wonder what the national averages are for some of these, and if that information will be in the information that will be provided in quarter one next year?
We can definitely add that in.
That's great. Yeah, I would appreciate that. Thank you. And then lastly, for our outreach to small businesses, are we doing outreach aside from, through One Redmond? Because I know a lot of our small businesses aren't necessarily members, and just wanted to see what the, the temperature check was on that.
Yes, so we are hosting our own focus groups, and here's a plug, is we are actually having a bit of a challenge getting responses from businesses actually across the industry with the questionnaire and the focus group. I think there's a lot of things that come into play, survey fatigue for sure. Also, this is novel for them, being reached out and asked. So we're going to, over the next week and a half, do more targeted, intensive outreach, kind of go door to door, pick up the phone and call to say yes, this is a real thing, and we really do want to hear from you. Please join. So that will really also just start setting a good foundation for those business relationships as well. We are, our focus groups are industry-specific, and I think sometimes with these plans, what happens is then all of a sudden that industry starts talking and convening, and then that can kind of take a hold and fire, and then there's, you know, more and continued conversations and, and champion, championing of that, that group, whether it be by industry or geographic location, as, as time continues. So we're hoping that that will start, that this plan will help spark some of that as well, especially as we start looking into like district development strategies, et cetera. We want to be able to be the convener, but then find the champions within the community to kind of continue conversations.
Nice. Well, if there are opportunities that we as council members can share out, when some of these are, please just let us know. I know a lot of us have small business contacts that would be interested in engaging, so.
I'll do. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Council Vice President Kritzer?
Just a quick follow-up on that. I, I did, a little over a year ago, do a really interesting roundtable with One Redmond with businesses that were in the fitness and, and activity sector, which is a really interesting area, just because so many of those businesses, like that gymnastics place or dance studios or, or, you know, different types of gyms or other things, they need really, they're unique spaces, and a lot of them are located in places like where Marymore Village is developing. So anyway, just, I don't know if that's on your list, but I found that to be a really interesting conversation, and I think at the crux of some of these, if it's not already on your list. One question following up on the retail discussion, that I would really love to get your economic insight on, is, you know, as we look at, at trends around what's happening to retail overall, just due to online purchasing and, you know, for, in the middle of our city, in our downtown, we have a big mall. And, and I think overall, when you look at the trends of just how people are doing their purchasing, I think it may also be one of the reasons why you see some of that space struggling, is more because of just the broader economic trends. Like, for example, Macy's closed, not necessarily because of Redmond being not a great place for Macy's, but because Macy's was closing quite a few stores. So I guess I'm just kind of interested in that when we think about what should be our target for retail? Like, what is, what is the, given what we think the actual trend of the industry is going to be? And then what else, what else might go in place if we don't have some of the classic retail, like a Macy's or a Bed Bath &amp; Beyond? Is it smaller mom-and-pop shop retail? Is it more activity types of places? You know, what, what are the trends that we're seeing? And what kinds of things would we want to attract that likely would be able to actually kind of succeed in these spaces over time? Not, not to be negative about retail, so we definitely want to have a great place where you can live, play, shop, eat, et cetera. But just being realistic about that, I'd be interested with that economic analysis lens on it. And then last comment I meant to, to say earlier is, I would be really interested in terms of other industries that we're looking at, would be around the childcare industry. I know I always bring this up, but I think in this context, it's pretty interesting. It'd be interesting to know if other cities have really looked at strategies to be able to attract child, childcare, more childcare businesses, operations, and that could provide more childcare to our community. And in turn, the impact of places that have successfully done that and provided enough affordable and accessible childcare, how that could impact our economic development strategies, since I know when I talk to a lot of businesses, part of their issue is workforce attraction, and one of the reasons people haven't been able to get back to work is because they don't have access to childcare. So anyway, I'd love to see something addressed within our economic development plan specifically related to childcare, if that's relevant, so put that out there.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. Sorry, Councilmember Kritzer reminded me that I had one note when I walked in the room, and that was the conversation, actually, earlier this evening, we had a conversation about some of our progress toward our climate goals. And commuter traffic and the emissions associated continue to be, you know, one of our top challenges. So jobs and homes located in the same place, which I'm sure is already in all of the plans that were analyzed going into this and are heavily contributing to one of the themes, but it's some, certainly something that I will be looking for as, as we kind of look at that five-year plan. What else can we be doing as a city to make sure folks are able to work and live in the same place and not get in a car every day to do so? Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing nothing. Thank you very much for the presentation. We look forward to hearing more in the coming year. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Redmond 2050 Phase II Policies, and Director Carol Helen will be joining us up at the table to introduce the item, as we make a quick little switch here.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you. I'm Carol Helen, the Planning and Community Development Director, and this will be the third meeting that we will be discussing Redmond 2050 Phase II Policies. So on October 3rd, Planning and Community Development staff introduced the first drafts of the Phase II Comprehensive Plan Element Updates. Council then held a study session on October 10th to discuss community design, climate resilience, and sustainability, and moving from policies to action. You discussed those in greater detail. And then tonight, we're back to conclude the conversation on the balance of the Phase II first drafts, so that we can take your input into consideration as we start drafting the second drafts. Based on council feedback at the end of the last study session, the four areas of focus, or the areas of focus for tonight are the participation, implementation, and evaluation element, the human services element, and the land use element. So I'm joined tonight by Lauren Alpert, Ian Lefcourt, and Jeff Churchill from the Long Range Planning Division of Planning and Community Development Department. And with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Jeff to recap the high points of the participation, implementation, and evaluation element.
Thanks, Carol. I want to say two things to start. One is, this
One is this element is the good work of Audra Cardenas, who is on vacation, so I am representing it for her. And second is that the participation, implementation, and evaluation element is kind of, it's one of those elements that's not like the others. It isn't about substance. It's really about process mostly, and how we do business in planning and as a community, and how we bring people in, and how we evaluate the plan after it's adopted. So those are some notable features about this element, just as a recap. The goals for that update of this element are to promote active participation by all members of the community, to provide a foundation for equitable, transparent, and accountable planning processes, to ensure that the input that we receive for any planning process represents the diversity of the community, to have predictable, transparent development review processes, and to avoid negative impacts to vulnerable communities by using equity review tools. So some of the, those are some of the highlights of the update. There are fewer policies in this version than the last, although not a lot fewer, just a couple more, a couple fewer, rather, through streamlining. It's also been updated to include Redmond 2050 themes and to include more inclusive language such as replacing words like citizen with words like community member. There are new policies about involving historically excluded community members in planning processes, streamlining the development review process, reporting on the performance of the development review process, and equity impact, developing equity impact tools. Those are the highlights for that element. I am going to pass it on to Ian to take us through human services.
Hello, my name is Ian Lefcourt, Senior Planner. I use he/him pronouns. And I am excited to share the work that was done, of course, with our small but mighty Human Services Team, Brooke Alaric and Tisa. The Human Services element is also kind of one of those elements that's not quite like the others because so much of the human services in our community are not directly provided by the city itself. But the Human Services element does define the city's role in planning, funding, coordinating, and improving the delivery of those human services. Some of the updates to the element include a more proactive city approach to providing these services when gaps occur, kind of land use alignment, pursuit of equity, especially racial, and partnership growth. This draft also broadens some policy language to make sure that all the tools and options are available to the city. One example is we had a policy that discussed about leveraging federal funds. And that raises the question, well, why wouldn't we look at all funds as potential resources? So we made the change to just look at resources like that. And we're also always striving to make the element more accessible by removing any uninclusive language, and of course, getting jargon out of there as possible. Input to date has been overwhelmingly supportive. It's been to Planning Commission, the Human Services Commission, our Community Advisory Committee, and of course, just all throughout our community engagement. People are very happy with our human services production. And they thought the element really helped highlight where we can go. Because of course, the need for human services typically always exceeds what we can provide. So it's all about creating efficiencies and prioritization. Most of the remaining feedback was kind of more about formatting and narrative. So we're pretty happy with where the policies landed. And I will also take on the start of land use. And this is exciting because while all elements of the comprehensive plan are important, the land use element is really the star of the show. And one of the pieces we feel that really is capturing community values is our new neighborhood land use designation. We have heard repeatedly that folks love the notion of complete neighborhoods. And the Redmond 2050 project is interpreting that to mean many of the basic needs and goods of day-to-day life can be served by entities close to your home, whether that's rolling, walking, biking, just trying to avoid single occupancy vehicle use. While some of the uses there vary, the overwhelming favorite is anything delicious. Food-based services popped up all the time. And that ranges from small grocers all the way up to, you know, full-service eateries. And while there is a, some amount of non-residential uses proposed in that designation, it is not of the scale or breadth of non-residential uses as would occur in, say, the citywide mixed uses. And that's where Senior Planner Lauren Alpert will take us.
Lauren Alpert, she/her pronouns, is Senior Planner. So we incorporated a lot of that feedback that we received from the community to be closer to those commercial uses in creating those complete neighborhoods. And we're implementing that with the citywide mixed use designations so that people can use that active and accessible transportation, walking and rolling, to get to these non-residential uses. And we're looking at the, that implementation of those complete neighborhoods. And we heard a lot of support for creating these. We also heard some concerns about traffic and noise concerns. So we're looking at implementing these, these citywide mixed use neighborhoods with a variety of different scales and intensities to address those concerns. And yeah, based on our community engagement and our input up to date, we have heard a lot of support overall for the citywide mixed use designations, especially, as Ian said, leading towards the delicious, so food trucks, corner stores, cafes, but also some other community uses like smaller healthcare facilities located within a neighborhood or community centers or spaces. And I'll turn it back to Jeff.
All right, thanks, Lauren. This slide is in the deck just to remind us of all of the different components of the comprehensive plan. And so we are looking at three of several tonight, but not, no additional presentation there. So tonight, we are very interested in policy direction from all of you on these early drafts, especially the three that we're focused on tonight. There were questions from councilmembers specifically about these drafts that are captured in that issues matrix. But the conversation doesn't need to stop there. It can kind of go whatever direction you want to take it. And that concludes the recap and presentation. Turn it back to the council president.
Okay. Anyone want to kick us off with conversation or review of the matrix questions and answers? Councilmember Stewart.
Okay, thank you so much. Maybe I'll just do the first topic, maybe if we go topic by topic. I don't know if that's helpful. So on participation, implementation, and evaluation. I, I love how it was, how it was framed tonight, that this is the, the how, not, not the what. And that is the part that's sitting in the, the seats that we do that I look for in terms of a backstop for how we can hold ourselves accountable in the future. And I see so much of our intention around becoming a more equitable city. That is a centerpiece of the whole Redmond 2050 project. And a lot of that process falls in this place. So I really do appreciate that. I have a specific observation. I, I don't intend to like wordsmith with you all here, so I will offer this to you in case it's something else that you might be able to, to think on and maybe speak with Audra about. I noticed that PI 1, 2, and 24 are missing something for me that actually I found in HS 18, in the Human Services section. And that is not just including folks. Again, this equity thing, this is really hard. And we are trying to do something differently than we've done it in the past in order to get a different outcome. And so getting it all in, in the right places is, is difficult. So I just want to make sure we have all our bases covered. I want to make sure that folks who have historically been left out are included. I also want to make sure, and this is the part that's in HS 18, that folks most impacted by any particular policy or decision are actively invited to the table, too. And that's what we have in 18 that I wonder about for PI 1, 2, and 24. So I just offer that up. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thoughts or feedback?
Can I say one more thing about that? Just because you brought it up, I think you, councilmembers, probably have noticed that the way that we talk about equity in different elements, they are, it's a little bit different. You have different authors. It's at different times. And it's also something that we're bringing into the plan for the first time, really. So we have availed ourselves of the services of Jan Harrison to help us get consistent and build a vocabulary that we can use through the whole plan. And I think you're not going to see that come together until we're at the final drafts because we'll need to go back and revise things that you've already seen. But that's the direction we're headed to try to get a consistent approach to that in the plan.
Definitely an iterative process. We can understand that. Thanks.
And thank you for letting us know that you're engaging with Jan because that's something that we've all been talking about and bringing up a lot lately, making sure that she has a lens on all of the stuff that we're working on. And I know she's working on more inclusive language, so it'll be interesting to see how that permeates throughout this.
Anyone else? Questions, comments, concerns? Council Vice President Kritzler.
One question for you, if you could share a bit more about. Could you explain for us the, the difference between the local center and the urban center?
I can give you a technical explanation. A local, a local center is a center that Redmond or any other local city designates on its own. It actually, a local center, the thing, exists now in the county planning policies. So there's some framework for those, but they're locally designated. And then urban centers are, they exist either at a county level or at a regional level. And they're designated either by the county or by PSRC. But in general, there's a, there's a hierarchy where regional growth centers play the, kind of the most important role regionally, economically, and in housing, and, and in culture. And they're designated by PSRC. Countywide centers are kind of the next level down. And then local centers are kind of the next level down. But there's also a lot of discretion that the city has in local centers because they are designated by the city.
So my understanding from looking through the, the land use section is that the Marymore area is going to be a different type of center from, say, Overlake or, or downtown. And can you, I guess in practical terms, like us setting those, those visions, what that will likely result in, in terms of what, what we're envisioning?
That's a great question. So I think, so Becky's not here to talk about Overlake, but I think that's a good place to start. And Overlake is a region, it's a, it's a metropolitan growth center. So it's kind of at the top of the regional hierarchy in terms of centers. And so it, I think what you would see visually is probably, it would be the tallest part of the city, for example. It would be a place where you would expect regional amenities, places that would attract people from around the region. Downtown and Marymore, I think the, the land use element, we're already working on the second draft. And so I know this was not in your packet, but it, it continues to describe downtown as kind of the, the civic and cultural heart of the city. So it is a, it is a regional growth center. And so it does play an important regional role. But also for Redmond, it is the living room for the community. It is that place where people think of as kind of the, the heart of the city. Marymore is very much a, a work in progress, right? It's the zoning to kind of allow a transformation's only six years old. And it is currently a local center. And will, we will ask the county to designate it as a countywide growth center. And there's, that's kind of a new, that's a new thing in the, in the countywide planning policies. But you can expect that it would have a, of countywide importance in terms of accepting and accommodating growth. And there will be a light realization there, of course. But you might expect that many of the amenities, services would be focused on kind of, it's a spectrum, right? But more kind of Redmond than the region, maybe. Although it's next to a nice big regional park, so. Would you add more, Carol?
Thank you. And I guess underlying that question is maybe my thought, just reading through this, that I feel like we do have a clearer vision a lot. And we're obviously developing more on Overlake through the Overlake Neighborhood Plan, but even where we think we're headed for those. And I get this murky sense a little bit more around Marymore and kind of what that center is going to be. But it is going to be a, a center, a, a growing center because we have the light rail coming in. And even to our last item of conversation, just the, the potential change to, of business and kind of the mix of things in that area. I think it's key as we move forward in our comp plan and setting our vision for 2050, for us to really kind of think through that, that piece of it. Those were just some questions that came up for me in the land use element. And then I think one other question in, in the land use element that I'll, I'll bring up yet again, second time, say, childcare tonight, is, is that I think when, in the element, there's a lot of discussion about certain types of protected uses of certain industry, like for example, manufacturing, protecting certain manufacturing uses or designating that. And I think it would be interesting to be able to identify if there are some other types of uses of, of spaces that we want to designate as important to maintain, such as childcare facilities, or even, you know, nonprofit space or other types of space that could be useful to maintain as, as we kind of look at that. And I think there is one part, LU 12, that says encourage, that's about encouraging the provision of needed facilities that serve the general public, where I think it would be interesting. And we have education listed, but not childcare. And I think that could be a very useful one to add in there as, as something that is a necessary service, in my opinion. And then, I'm not sure if we're jumping to other elements, but I can say one, one other question that I had, jumping over to human services. Appreciated in that one, being able to read through some of the vision statement. I think the one thing that's missing for me in the vision statement at the moment, I think we're, we've got some great high-level kind of vision goals there. And we, I think there's a little bit of it being so high-level that we don't call out a couple of things of what we might envision. For example, I think we say that everyone has access to amenities all needed. But I think calling out and saying, you know, in 2050, let's hope that no one in Redmond goes hungry, that everyone has shelter, that everyone has basic medical care. It shows up in the next pages in the background section where it lists food, shelter, medical care. But I think to be able to set that as part of our bold vision, to say that in 2050, we want to make sure that every resident in Redmond has their basic needs to live a healthy and dignified life, would just make that section even stronger. And, and I like, I like a lot of the pieces in there of kind of beyond the basic needs, then what does it mean to live a, a full and vibrant life and, and in a community that is inclusive and has the type of culturally responsive services that we'll need as a growing community and increasingly diverse community? So love those pieces that are within there. But I would say, if, I think in that section, it'd be great if we have a few more kind of specifics about, about the types of things that we hope that every resident could have of what that means within human services.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Stewart, yeah, please.
Okay, I, I will, where did you leave off? Human services. Okay, I'll do my human services. I'll go to my land use one. Ian, thank you so much. I very much appreciate your enthusiasm for this category. And there are a few that I, I wrote in my notes just by way of communicate, just to say them out loud and like communicate to the public, like, we hear you. These things are important to you. And, and here they are. They're in the plan. And to also say to all of you, like, yes, very much agree with this direction. So Councilmember Fields isn't here tonight, but one of the concerns that he brought up last week was making sure that we are able to invest not only in those already experiencing homelessness, but those who are at risk of experiencing, experiencing that. And HS 10, it's right there in the text, is, it calls us to do that. And therefore, we can hold ourselves accountable to that through this comprehensive plan. Another one that I think that the, I already mentioned was having folks impacted by our decisions at the decision-making table. That was HS 18. And HS 15 asks us to reduce barriers to participating on the Human Services Commission. And that just caught my attention because if there are barriers to that commission in particular- in particular, they, you know, I have follow-up questions, like, do they exist in the others? And whatever lessons are learned there, if we could apply them to, you know, increasing participation and representation on all of our commissions and our advisory committees, I think that that'd be really wonderful. I have one request about HS20, which calls on us to center youth voice and a conversation that's coming up quite a bit in community. Most recently for me, it was at the kickoff for the Southeast Redmond Park Master Planning Process. And even there, a conversation showing up for parents about needing more active spaces for teens and needing more attention for teens. So I think traditionally, Redmond is a place where everybody knows it's a great place to raise your kids. And what do we need for our teens moving forward is kind of a more question. So I think we cannot interpret as it's written. I think we can interpret it broadly to include both elementary age and teens, but if not, I would appreciate the nuance on that, just so that we, in the future, can direct ourselves to take advantage of opportunities on that. And then finally, on the land use one, where we left off on the conversation, this conversation about complete neighborhoods is so exciting, and people have been bringing it up. So one of the questions that I've been getting is, love them, we want them, let's take down the regulatory barriers that are preventing them currently, but then what is the city's role in incentivizing that kind of change in those neighborhoods? And I just wondered if you all think that that's something that we may get to in future zoning codes, or if it's more about taking down the regulatory barriers and letting the market do what it may do? I'm curious about that one.
I think for the land use, we certainly want to make sure that the barriers are removed, and then that broader consideration about incentivizing. As Philly brought up before, we've got lots of discussions about preventing displacement, supporting small businesses. So it may be that it dovetails with those kinds of efforts. But I think our community certainly has an appetite for supporting these outcomes regardless of the pathway.
And I don't want to undersell what removing the barriers could do, because there are a lot of barriers to starting, to having a complete neighborhood in Redmond. And that is something that we will do as part of Redmond 2050. And that doesn't mean that it's going to be easy and that it's going to be fast. I think some of the barriers are historic land use patterns that have built up over decades. So we've been going through an exercise of, all right, we've heard from the community kind of the kinds of amenities they're interested in and the kinds of places that they might be appropriate. And so we have gone through an exercise, or we are going through an exercise of kind of scouring the land in Redmond to figure out what meets all of these criteria. And, you know, there's just not, there's not a very large number, but there's enough. And we'll share those all with you and with the community, too, kind of what we've found and kind of see what people think about those. But I do think there's a lot of scope for opportunity, even just removing barriers.
That's really helpful context. Thanks so much.
Thank you. I'll jump in with my very few comments. When Councilmember Stewart brought up the committee making it more equitable, that led me to remember that, I know Kirkland is currently looking at that, and they're looking to provide potential stipend for commissioners and/or childcare opportunity for commissioners to help ease those barriers. So I really think that would be something amazing for us to look at, and maybe we can talk about that in council budget next year. So just wanted to note that as one potential opportunity for that item. Really just wanted to say thank you for the care and attention you're taking with the land use issues as far as community development, neighborhood development, and making sure that the noise considerations and like all of those barriers that are currently existing and fears that community members may have about opening up more different types of land use in their neighborhoods. Just showing that you're really being mindful of that is very appreciated, at least from my perspective. And then touch base on the concept of placemaking and the districts. And I really think that is one area where we are currently lacking, and I look forward to 2050 and what Redmond can become, because placemaking is such a critical way to make people feel welcome at home, part of the community. And I think we have a really incredible opportunity with Overlake being so different from Marymore, and Marymore being so different from downtown. We can really create vibrant, different feelings throughout our city, and I look forward to that opportunity. And then along with the conversations about, you know, what kind of things we're bringing into the city as far as the land use topic, as well as dovetailing with the earlier conversation about economic vitality, there is a sense of missing opportunities for teens and missing engagement for community members just to go out and do something. So I think that that's really exciting, that we are potentially on this path to make sure that we have all of those different elements. We don't just want to be a community where you go to work. We want to be a community where you actually have something to do and ways to engage in the community. So I look forward to seeing this all come together. So thanks. Any other comments? Seeing none, do you have what you need from us tonight?
Yes, thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing you in January.
Great. We will see you in January.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate you all tonight. That brings us to our last item on the agenda, which is council talktime. You had a letter that was addressed to the National Transportation Safety Board in the packet, and all I'm looking for tonight is any feedback, or if anyone wants to team up with me to get that in a potentially different state, provide direction on it, see if people are interested in sending such a letter to the NTSB concerning pedestrian deaths and safety. So I'll open it up from there. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you and for the time that was invested. I think this was also with two other council members, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct?
It was intended to be, but it ended up not being.
Well, now you have five. My feedback on this, because of the nature of the recipient, my suggestion would be to add the ask in additionally at the top of the letter as well as at the end. So bottom line upfront.
Okay.
Thanks. And you'd asked if there was other interest in, I'm not currently too busy to take on additional tasks, but I support sending it. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate that feedback. Any other feedback or thoughts? Council Vice President Kretser.
Could you just provide us with some more context behind this letter?
Sure, yeah. This came out of the conversation that we had several months ago around the update from the NACTO conference. And we had talked about, with planning staff here, about opportunities for more and further engagement. And the idea came out of that conversation to send a letter basically talking about how we're doing what we can, but we need some attention drawn to the fact that vehicle safety standards have not kept pace with the growing vehicle weights and growing vehicle sizes. And some of these things that are standard safety features on vehicles are standard in European countries, but not standard and seen as a luxury item here in the United States. So this is really trying to encourage the National Transportation Safety Board to make those things standard.
And was this reviewed by staff?
Not yet.
Is that a plan?
Sure.
I'm just, I would love, yeah, I think I'm happy to support this overall, but I would love to have our staff who, you know, focus on this area, review it, and make sure that we're kind of getting that true up on it, if it's possible to use a little bit of staff time to look it over.
I did have Move Redmond look at it, and so they provided some feedback as well. But the next step was to get, make sure we have buy-in to do it, and then to get it to staff for any review if they have time in the next several weeks. So. Any other thoughts? Councilmember Stewart?
I haven't, you know, studied this issue, so the details of which, you know, I'm not very familiar with. My larger question is about our council hopper process, because this wasn't attached with a hopper form.
Yeah. It should have been, but I ran out of time due to the short condensed week with Thanksgiving.
So did we just run out of time? Should we reconvene on this in January with like a?
I was hoping to get this done so that our outgoing council members would have a chance to weigh in and vote on it, if possible, but we can regroup in January.
I guess I do hesitate to add to staff plates for not knowing if we have like enough interest, and really without having had a chance to study the issues, because there's some data points and assertions in here, and I may love them, but I don't know if I love them yet, just because we haven't had a chance to study. So the hopper form typically has some of that context and sourcing, is my understanding. So that was my first reaction to the letter.
Anyone else? Councilmember Carson?
So I think probably you know what I'm going to say, but I think this is way outside of our lane, and none of us are subject matter experts. We can read the data, but, and I don't even really see a nexus between this data and what that actually means to our community, because I think it'd be a more compelling argument to say, and this is what it translates to in Redmond, but I don't see that. I just see general statistics, which, if I'm the NTSB, I'm going to go roundfile this, and that's not, I don't want us to spend time on something that is just going to be discarded. So I would say it needs to be, there needs to be a nexus between what we're asserting here and Redmond, so that it makes sense why we're actually sending this letter to them, because this is what it translates in terms of deaths or injuries in our community. And so I would rather it be much more fully thought out and in that vein, before council signed on to it.
Awesome. I appreciate that feedback, because that's the kind of information I'm trying to get back. So this was just my first draft, and the next point is something that I would definitely want to follow up on. I appreciate that. Thank you. Council Vice President Kretser.
I want to just appreciate, Councilmember Stewart brought up about the hopper process, and I think it's a legitimate point that, you know, we established this process and everyone should use it. Even if we wish something would move a little bit faster or have a particular need, I think at any moment we could all say that. And so if we're going to say that everyone has to be by the process, then I do think we should probably align to the process or use the process we established. So even if we want something to move quicker, I mean, in this case, we could have had a hopper form along with the letter to have that initial discussion. So I know you were a little pressed for time. I also would say, I think it's a good point in terms of now just looking at it as well. I think if we're going to use some statistics in here, that having the citations for all of those statistics would be really important. Also, maybe not necessarily calling out particular vehicles. I see that Ford F-250 is like called out in this letter. So anyway, those are a couple of things that it might be useful, which is part of why I had said it would be good to have staff review on there. But I do think in terms of just even us being able to look at the data sources that are cited here, since there's a bunch of like data shows and, you know, these different statistics, so being able to know where that data comes from. But I appreciate the spirit of it, and especially council members going to this conference, learning some important things and wanting to bring back to us. I'd say probably for the long run is like having those council members come back and us have a discussion and say, what is something we all want to do, and kind of go in a letter like this. If we're not able to get it done before end of year, I think even if council members who've been involved in this aren't on the council at the time when we move forward with it, it's still a win. So anyway, that's, I think, both kind of respect for the process and respect for the great work that you guys have done in terms of thinking about this.
Great. Thank you all for the feedback. Appreciated. Is there any other items for council talktime? Councilmember Stewart?
Well, this just came to me. The hopper process is kind of new. We've only tried it a couple of times. So I don't know if it's council leadership, or Mayor Bernie, or just a collective understanding from all of us who are going to be here in January, but it's a process we should make sure our new colleagues are familiar with. And I don't know where or when exactly is the right point in the orientation process to do that. So I'm just saying it out loud, because it is something new. Was there anything else new in the recent year? Nothing's jumping out to mind, but perhaps.
Yes, I already have a mental note to make sure that they have access to the OneDrive that we all have access to with the hopper form and the, I mean, it'll be an updated ombuds calendar and all of those items that we frequently go to with how to run a meeting and all those things as well. Council Vice President Kretser.
I would also say that I think it'd definitely be a great agenda item for our next council retreat, to be able to discuss the hopper process, how it's worked, how it could be improved. I know we're also in communication often with the mayor about this and trying to figure out how it can work best between us with the mayor's staff, et cetera. So it's been a work in progress, and I hope we can make it work even better going forward, and hopefully even advance some items that are still moving forward in the hopper.
Councilwoman Carson?
So unrelated to this conversation, but I just wanted to remind everybody that Redmond Lights starts this weekend on December 2nd, Saturday. From 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. is the kickoff, and then every night from 5:00 to 11:00, you can watch the, or check out the installations wherever they happen to be. So.
Yes.
Come on down and enjoy the wet. It's going to be, I think it's going to be wet, so, yeah.
Mr. Carson will meet you at the silent disco.
No, I'm not doing that.
Thank you for that reminder. Anyone else have anything for council talktime? Just want to say on December 5th will be our last meeting of the year. We will have our swearing-in of new and retaining council members, as well as our farewell to our outgoing council members. There will be a brief reception after the swearing-in, and people can come and mingle and say their thanks and wish their congratulations. And hopefully people can join us for that on the 5th at 7:00. Is that what you were going to say, Mayor Bernie? Okay. All right. Seeing no other hands for remaining council talktime items, that brings us to the end of our agenda, and without objection, we adjourn. Thanks, everyone.